What a friend we have in Jesus! Oh, our sins and grips to bear. What a privilege to carry everything to God in prayer. Oh, what peace we often forfeit. Oh, what needless pain we bear. Oh, because we do not care everything to God in prayer. Have we trials and temptations? Is there trouble anywhere? We should never be discouraged. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Then we find a friend so faithful. Go while all our sorrows shed. Jesus knows our Gary goodness. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Shelter, shepherd, save your king. I give everything to you. Oh, we weak and heavy laden, covered with a load of care. Precious sinner still our refuge. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Come, that defends the spiced forsaken. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Be in his arms and taken share with thee. Thou wilt find a soul as there. Thou wilt find a soul as there. Shelter, shepherd, save your king. I give everything to you. Precious Jesus, Lord and Friend. I give everything to you. Shelter, shepherd, save your king. I give everything to you.
So, in Session 10, God's Righteousness Realized in Glorification. I will be continuing what Jerry left off last week. But before that, let's review our memory verse, Romans 1:16. I believe everyone is already, I don't know, memorized this. It says, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jews first and also to the Greek." So we were commanded, or we are commanded, to share the gospel, and we should not be ashamed in sharing the gospel. And I pray, whatever lesson we learned during these studies of Romans, we are also sharing to others whom we know. Okay, so let's continue our review. In Romans 1, Chapter 1-3, we learn about condemnation, where God's wrath is upon all mankind. So man is under the wrath of God. In Romans 3:23, it says,[375.42][375.42]"For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God." That means you and me have sinned and fall short of the glory of God. Because of Adam's sin, we learn sa Chapter 1-3, that we are also beneficiary of that commission of sin. So let me illustrate that. So it says, "All have sinned and fall short of the glory of God." Meaning, we have a holy God. And man is a sinful. So God, a holy God, cannot have a relationship with sinful men or cannot have fellowship with sinful men. Falling short of His glory, meaning His holiness. His holiness. Since we are sinful, we try our best to make us acceptable towards God. Yung ano, yung problem of following the law. Yung mga Jew, they thought that by following the law, they will become righteous or become holy. It is not... All said, "It is not by obeying the law that we become holy." It is... It says in Romans 6:23, "For the wages of sin is death." So when we hear the word wage, it means kapalit or in return of our effort, of our work. Mga 15 days, we will receive our wage. So wage means kapalit. So ano kapalit ng kasalanan? It's death. Spiritual death. Not only spiritual death, but also physical death. As a result of sin, man will die physically and also will die spiritually. Death means separation, like the picture illustrated. Now, we are separated from God. Dahil yun po 'yung kapalit. So if all our effort cannot reach the standard of God, of holiness... In Romans 4:5, where Dr. June explained to us, ang solution is justification. In Romans 5:8, it says, "But God demonstrated His own love toward us in that while we were yet sinners, Christ died for us." If the wages of sin is death, nung kabera ng kasalanan is death, ang si Jesus, si Jesus took our place. Sabi niito, "Christ died for us." It means, instead of us paying for that penalty, Christ did. So since we cannot reach God, God reached man by sending His Son, Jesus Christ, to die on the cross. It says, "Therefore, having been justified by faith, we have peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ." So we were justified because of our faith in Jesus. We believe what Jesus did on the cross is enough for us to have a relationship with God. So before, we are enemy of God. But because of Christ's death on the cross, we have now peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ. Verse 9, "Much more than having now been justified by His blood, we shall be saved from the wrath of God through Him." So Jesus shed His blood on the cross. And with that, He paid He paid the penalty, and the wrath of God was removed. Remember, there was a question about ano ba yon? That God, God, ano, that Jesus upis God's righteous demand for sin. Meaning, because of Christ's death on the cross, na-satisfy yung demand ni God, yung just demand ni God. No, yung death. So for if while we were enemies, we were reconciled to God through the death of His Son. Much more, having been reconciled, we shall be saved by His life. So through Christ's death on the cross, we are now reconciled. I would like to emphasize God's justification. Justification means we were declared righteous because of Christ's death on the cross. Christ became our righteousness. No, all our old sinful nature was crucified with Christ on the cross. And that's what we learned in Chapter 6, Verse 8, where Jerry explained to us that when Christ died on the cross, we were included in His death. So if justification is declaring us to be righteous, sanctification is we are set apart to be holy. In other words, God has chosen us, His children, to become holy, to live a holy life. We are living, we are following God, not for us to become holy. We are already holy by sanctifying us, by setting us apart to be holy. We just need to live it out. And the last thing that Jerry mentioned last week is the key is trusting or letting the Holy Spirit take control of our lives. Sinabi niya in Romans 6:13, "And do not go on presenting the members of your body to sin as instruments of righteousness, but present yourselves to God as those alive from the dead and your members as instruments of righteousness to God. So now present your members as slaves to righteousness resulting in sanctification." So every time, every time we present ourselves to the power of the Holy Spirit, we are being sanctified, meaning we are made holy. We are already holy. But because of our sinful nature, no? It always coming back. Kaya nga, in his explanation, there was this problem inside us. We want to follow God. We want to become right before God. But there is this one thing, that one thing also is opposed to God. Yung what we want to do, we cannot. What we are not supposed to do, that's what we are doing. So there is tension inside us. Kasi nga, to whom we present, no? Like for example ditong ano to, yung illustration na ito. So if Jesus is already in our life and He is on the throne of our life, self is in submission to His Holy Spirit. So if we do that, if we follow God, if we surrender to Him totally, He will rule our life and He will make our life in order, like what we see in this picture. Sabi niya, "Do you not know that when you present yourselves to someone as slaves for obedience, you are slaves of the one whom you obey, either of sin resulting in death or obedience resulting in righteousness? So to whom we become slave, that is our master." So let me show this illustration. So if we are in total submission to God through His Holy Spirit, sabi dito, the result will be righteousness. We are not becoming righteous. We are already righteous. Yung totong, yung righteousness that we have in our life, it will only happen if we will allow Jesus or the Holy Spirit to take control of our life. But if self is on the throne and then we try to become righteous, that is not facing to God, that would lead to death. Death means not only physical death, but if we continue to be disobedient to God, no? And if God, through His Holy Spirit, is continually reminding us, reminding us, "Return, return, submit to Me." At matigas pa rin ang ulo natin, remember, it says, "God will discipline us. Whom He love, He will discipline, to the point of taking us out of this world." Not only that, death means also separation, di ba? So meaning, if I will allow myself to take control of my life, I will not have fellowship with God. But Jesus is always in my heart, is always in my life. It's only the fellowship that is removed or nakat. Meaning, I don't enjoy Jesus' presence in my life if self or flesh is on the throne. So yung nasa taas, the spirit controlled, and then yung nasa baba, yung self-controlled. So alin dito? Yung nga, yun yung tension eh. The spirit led or the self led. So to whom we surrender, to whom we present ourselves, is our master. Either God, the Holy Spirit, or self, ang ating sinusunod, or flesh. Okay? So, as we, as I conclude this now, in justification, we have freedom from the penalty of sin. We are no longer us, or we will not pay anymore our sin because Jesus paid for that already. So we are now free from that penalty. We are now free from the wrath of God. In sanctification, we are now free from the power of sin. Remember, because of Christ's death on the cross, He gave us now the power, not under sin, which are master, but the Holy Spirit is now our new master. So freedom from penalty of sin, justification. Sanctification is freedom from the power of sin. Sin has no power over us anymore. God is our new master because He is the one who gave us new life. And tonight, yung glorification, that's what we are going to study this evening. So I will just be continuing Chapter 8, Verses 14 to 39. Di nisgast ni Jerry, yung 1-13. So let's begin. Sabi niyan, Romans 8:40 to 17, "For all who are being led by the Spirit of God, these are sons of God; for you have not received a spirit of slavery leading to fear again, but you have received a spirit of adoption, a sons by which we cry out, Abba Father. The Spirit Himself testifies with our spirit that we are children of God. And if children, heirs also, heirs of God and fellow heirs with Christ, if indeed we suffer with Him, so that we may also be glorified with Him." So let's look at this passage. In verse 14, it says, "All who are being led by the Spirit of God, these are sons of God." Before, we are slave of sin. If we are a slave, no, if we are slave, wala po tayong magagawa but to obey, to submit. But here, led, to be led by the Spirit means the Holy Spirit is leading us. But still, it's up to us if we will follow His leading. Leading us, reminding us of God's command, of His word, that we need to obey. So the difference is, as a slave, wala tayong will. We really need to submit to our master. But this one, led by the Spirit, we willingly obeying or submitting to the Spirit of God. Okay, so the Holy Spirit... If you remember the message last Sunday, no? Pastor Peter said, "God did not created us as robots. He gave us a choice." So in this same manner, we are being led by the Spirit of God. Because before this, no, yung verse 12 to 13, it says, na there is a flesh and then there's a spirit. So kung flesh, sabi natin, it will lead to death. But if the Spirit, yung life. Okay? So it says here also that those who are being led by the Spirit, these are sons of God. "For you have not received a spirit of slavery leading to fear again, but you have received a spirit of adoption, a sons by which we cry out, Abba Father." So we receive a spirit of adoption, not a spirit of slavery that leads to fear again. So when we submit ourselves to sin or to the flesh, there is that fear. No? Many times, Christians will always think that if they continually sinning and not becoming victorious, they might lose their salvation. But God did not give us that kind of spirit. He gave us a spirit of adoption as sons. In the Old Testament, yung word, the adoption, is also the same as if you are real son, real child. No? Ah. And the word is also meaning that we became a child of God during birth. Like I belong to the Adriano family because I was born in that family. So I was born into the family of God because I experienced spiritual birth. Yung tinatawag doon, sa John Chapter 3, sabi ni Jesus to Nicodemus, "You must be born again." In John 1:12, it says, "For as many as received Him to them, He gave the right to become children of God." Those who received Christ into their life became children of God. That's why if the Holy Spirit is in us, we can cry out, "Abba Father." Yung "Abba" is a call of endearment, like Papa, like Daddy. In my case, I called my father, "Tati." That's a endearment, no? That's how intimate we should be if the Holy Spirit is in us, that we can call Father, Abba. And then it says in verse 16, "The Spirit Himself testifies with our spirit." Ah, "The Spirit Himself testifies to our spirit." The Holy Spirit in our spirit, they testify that we are children of God. And if children, heirs also, heirs of God and fellow heirs with Christ. So as children, we are heirs. Heirs. Tama, no? Hindi dahil kapampangan ako. Heirs. Silent words. Heirs. Oo, pagkapampangan, heirs. Tagapagmana. So ano itong, ano itong wealth that Paul is talking about? This is everything, all the resources that we need to live the Christian life. All the resources. Sadly to say, many Christians don't know their inheritance as a child of God. That's why they live a defeated life. They struggle. They live the Christian life on their own way, on their own effort. But here, it says that we are co-heirs of God and fellow heirs with Christ. No? Ah. So we should not be living a defeated life. We should be appropriating all these resources as we live and as we follow Jesus. This is already ours. It's for us to claim. No? Ah, so we just have to appropriate. So in summary, we have the Holy Spirit in us to lead us. And according to John 14:26, sabi doon, "The Holy Spirit will teach us, or will teach you all things and bring you to remembrance all that I said to you." So the Holy Spirit will bring to remembrance everything God promised to us. We just have to discover them by reading our Bible and talking to God regularly. In 17, I will continue, no? Sabi niya, "If indeed we suffer with Him, so that we may also be glorified with Him." Not only that we will be co-heir with God, if He suffers, we will also suffer with Him. And if we will suffer with Him, we will also be glorified with Him. So first point, our power, the Holy Spirit. So the Holy Spirit was given to us for us to become victorious in our Christian walk, that we will enjoy our fellowship with God. Okay, in Romans, tuloy natin, Romans 8:18 to 25. "For I consider that the sufferings of this present time are not worthy to be compared with the glory that is to be revealed to us; for the anxious longing of the creation waits eagerly for the revealing of the sons of God." Verse 20, "For the creation was subjected to futility, not willingly, but because of him who subjected it, in hope that the creation itself also will be set free from its slavery to corruption into the freedom of the glory of the children of God. For we know that the whole creation groans and suffers the pains of childbirth together until now. And not only this, but also we ourselves having the first fruits of the Spirit, even we ourselves groan within ourselves, waiting eagerly for our adoption as sons, the redemption of our body. For in hope we have been saved, but hope that is sin is not hope; for who hopes for what he already sees? But if we hope for what we do not see, with perseverance we wait eagerly for it." Let me give you context, no? It says, "For I consider the suffering of this present time..." The suffering of this present time. So this refers to all creation, including us, Christians. All of us, whether Christian or not, we will, we are suffering, no? We are suffering. This is the result of sin. This is a, a judgment from God to his creation. Okay, so, so God's judgment wa- was upon Adam, when Adam was thrown away from Eden, yung garden. Sabi niya, from now on, you will work, you will work. Uh paghihirapan mo ang iyong kakainin. And since that time, uh people or mankind became so uh away from God, turning away from God, living life apart from God. They tried to live life apart from God. Uh one example is yung, the flood. God saw the wickedness of man. And he was so sorry that he created man. That's why he judged it by uh yung, through the flood. Only Noah was saved. So we saw dun sa, the, yung sa Kenowa, yung sa flood, na there is no place in yung wickedness with God. Namumuhay talaga siya, no? Kaya makikita natin, no? Sabi dito ni Paul, yung suffering, tayo, including us, no, yung suffering that we experience, compared, no, compared with the glory that is to be revealed to us. Sabi niya, nothing, no? For if, for I consider that the suffering of this present time are not worthy compared. Kasi the suffering now that we experience is just temporary, temporary. But the glory that will be revealed to us in the future will be permanent for eternity. So what is this uh to be revealed? Sabi dito sa verse nine, for the anxious longing of the creation waits eagerly for the revealing of the sons of God. So wait eagerly for the revealing of the son of, son of God, refer to the second coming of Christ, no? Uh we, we wait, all of us, we wait eagerly for the coming of the Lord Jesus Christ, where all of us, he will take, no? Uh sabi dito, for the creation was subjected to futil- futility. What does that mean? It means uh creation are subjected, subjected to purposelessness and decay. The world, the creation, uh will continually be deteriorated. It will not improve. That's why we have problems with environment because of man's wickedness. Na corrupt niya pati yung ating environment. Okay, uh in this world, all of us, whether Christian or not, we, we suffer fa- pain, no pain. We suffer uh disappointments, discouragement. Uh there is that physical pain, no, yung sickness, especially during this time of pandemic. Uh there is also that uh sorrow where our loved ones, mga lost loved ones. So there, there, there's a lot of going on in our life. And then, nan dun din, yung desire natin to follow Jesus, to become faithful. But because of the, our weaknesses, we fall into sin. Uh and then we, we feel guilty and then we blame ourselves, we br- we blame other people. Uh and then sometimes mentally, uh we say to ourselves, ay, di siguro para sa akin tong Kristiano- Christianismo na'to. It's so difficult, it's so hard, no? So these are the suffering that we encounter. In other country, Christians suffer because of persecution. Uh because they could not practice their belief, because they are prohibited. So dito, makikita natin, for the creation was subjected to futility, not willingly, but because of him who subjected it. God was the one who subjected creation. He, nan dun yung judgment niya sa creation. Pero verse twenty-one says, that creation itself also will be set free from its slavery to corruption into the freedom of the glory of the children of God. Sabi dito, creation itself will be set free from its slavery to corruption into the freedom of the glory of the children of God. Uh there will come a time when Christ return, that we will have new heaven and new earth. For the first heaven and the first earth passed away, referring yung present natin. And there is no longer any sea. And then in second Peter three seven to thirteen, but by his word, the present heavens and earth are being reserved for fire, kept for the day of judgment and destruction of ungodly men. But do not let this one fact escape your notice. Beloved, that with the Lord, one day is like a thousand years, and a thousand years like one day. The Lord is not slow about his promise, as some count slowness, but is patient toward you, not wishing for any to perish but for all to come to repentance. But the day of the Lord will come, like a thief, in which the heavens will pass away, with a roar and the elements will be destroyed with intense heat, and the earth and its works will be burned up. So it will be destroyed. Since all these things are to be destroyed in this way, what sort of people ought you to be in holy conduct and godliness? Looking for and hastening the coming of the day of God, because of which the heavens will be destroyed by burning and the elements will melt with intense heat. Verse thirty, but according to his promise, we are looking for new heavens and new earth in which righteousness dwells. So eto yung good news. When Jesus returns, he will create new heavens and new earth in which righteousness dwells. Lahat ng ito uh mabawala. Kaya ang good news is, not only that when Jesus returns, we will be transformed, we will have a glorified body, no? But also we will be free from all these sufferings and pain. Let's continue. In verse twenty-six to thirty, it says, in the same way, the Spirit also helps our weakness, for we do not know how to pray as we should, but the Spirit himself intercedes for us with groanings too deep for words. And he who searches the hearts knows what the mind of the Spirit is, because he intercedes for the saints according to the will of God. Verse twenty-eight, and we know that God causes all things to work together for good to those who love God, to those who are called according to his purpose. For those whom he foreknew, he also predestined to become, to become confirmed to the image of his Son, so that he would be the firstborn among many brethren. And this whom he predestined, he also called, and those whom he called, he also justified. And this whom he justified, he also glorified. So we see here in verse twenty-six, the Holy Spirit helps us in our weakness. The Holy Spirit helps us in our struggle. The Holy Spirit gives us the power to overcome. And when we pray, the Holy Spirit helps us in our prayer. Because we do not know how to pray. Ang ibig ko sabihin dito, not that we really don't know how to pray, we know how to pray. But sometimes, we do not know what to say because of that deep and yung, too much suffering, no? When we are in pain, when we are hurt, no, when we, we, we groan, we groan. Sometimes, hindi tayong makaater ng words. That's where the Holy Spirit intercedes and helps us pray for us. So it says, the Spirit himself intercedes for us. Interced means he prays for us, with groanings too deep for words. And he who searches the hearts knows what the mind of the Spirit is, because he intercedes for the saints according to the will of God. Many times, there are things that is happening to our life. And then we do not understand why, no? And uh sabi dito, in verse twenty-eight, we know that God causes all things to work together for good to those who love God, to those who are called according to his purpose. So when things, when we do not understand that is happening to us, or how come I got this, I gas- I got this disease? How come I'm having this problem? How come I have this uh husband, or I have this wife? Or I have this child, or matigas ang ulo na anak, mga ganun. Uh ah, madali tas, madali tas sinasabi, oh God, uh everything will work together for good. Kinokot natin kaagad yun, no? But you know, sabi rito, God causes all things to work together. Pero nakalagay din dyan, sa original kasi, the way it was sentenced is to those who love God, to those who love God, God, God causes all things to work together. Yung all things, it doesn't mean na, yung the hurt, the pain, everything that, the trouble that we experience, si God ang nagkokost noon, no? Uh for example, no, if I made a wrong decision, I will pay the consequence. Sabingan nila, we can have all the choices we have in life or in the world. But yung consequence, we do not have a choice. We do not have a choice. So if that thing that happened to me, that trouble that happened to me is because of my wrong decision or my wrong action. Okay? If that thing is a result of my disobedience, God did not cause that. It's a, a consequence. What it means is even though in this world, we are living in a fallen world. We are living in a wicked world. We cannot expect all men to treat us fairly. Makakaharap, makakaharap tayo ng mga injustices in life dito sa lupa. Kasi this world is evil, is wicked, no? So kung kayo eh mahinahon na driver, no? And then ikakap tayo, yung pagiging mahinahon yun, nawawala yun na nag- nag-iirap inside you, nagustuhan niyong gumante. Why? Eh kasi ganoon sila eh, eh kung Christian yun o taga C C F yun, ay maintindihan ko pa yun bakit siya magali, no? So hindi siya expected sa mga follower ni Jesus. Pero yun yung expected natin sa world. The world will, will not treat us fairly. So mag- makaka-experience tayo ng maraming trouble dito sa world. So ang, ang, ang inalo dito, ang inalo dito, those things na nangyayari sa buhay dati, that is unfair. Or if, for example, uh something happened to me, hindi namang result siya ng aking misjudgment, wrong decision, or disobedience. Like for example, in the case of Joseph. Joseph was walking with God. But in spite of that, he was in trouble. He was subjected to, to become a slave. And then he was imprisoned because na ano siya, naaccuse siya, wrong accusation. Pero he continually walked with God. And as a result, even though man, no? Try to do things against him, those things, God made it good for Joseph. I hope that is clear. So God can make things not good become good for us. For what purpose? For what purpose? Verse twenty-nine. For those whom he foreknew, he also predestined to become confirmed to the image of his Son. The, the goal of sanctification, the goal of our suffering is for our be- becoming Christ-like. God wants us to be confirmed, to be like his son Jesus, no? So that he would be the firstborn among many brethren, meaning Jesus will become not in terms of priority, but in position. If Christ died on the cross and on the third day he rose again, uh he can also, that, that was also given to us, that kind of life. Even though we will die here on earth before his coming, but when he returns, because we have that life, he will bring us alive again. In verse thirty, no? And those whom he predestined, he also called, and those whom he called, he also justified. And this whom he justified, he is also, he also glorified. Yung word glorified, past tense, meaning if right now we are struggling becoming like Christ, no? Becoming like Christ. Ang sinasabi dito, he also glorified. Tayo, past tense, uh we are already, uh we, we will be confirmed to his son Jesus Christ. We will be confirmed, for sure, for sure. We will become like Jesus. So for now, for now, while living he- here on earth, we just have to trust the Holy Spirit to take control of us, to make that happen. So it's a process. It is not one time. Every day, every day, we should submit to the control of the Holy Spirit. Because in the future, in the future, God will make us, will conform us to the kind of person he wants us to be, like Jesus. So last part, no? I hope di pa ko over time. Romans eight thirty-one to thirty-nine, well, then shall we say to these things, if God is for us who is against us, he who did not spare his own son but delivered him up, that deliver him over for us all, how will he not also with him freely give us all things? Who will bring a change, a charge against God's elect? God is the one who justifies, who is the one who condemns. Christ Jesus is the one who died, yes, rather who was raised, who is at the right hand of God, who also intercedes for us. who also intercedes for us. Who will separate us from the love of Christ? Will tribulation or distress, persecution or famine, or nakedness or peril or sword? Just as it is written, for your sake we are being put to death all day long. We are considered as sheep to be slaughtered. But in all things, but in all these things we overwen- overwhelmingly conquer through Him who loves us. For I am convinced that neither death nor life, nor angels nor principalities, nor things present, nor things to come, nor powers, nor height, nor death, death, nor any other created thing will be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus, our Lord." So in this passage, our relationship with God is secure, is secure. Nothing can separate us from the love of God. We are assured of victory. No? We are assured of victory. Verse thirty seven says, "In all these things we are, we overwhe- overwhelmingly conquer through Him, through Jesus, through the Holy Spirit. We are from, we are free from defeat because of Christ who lives in us by His Holy Spirit." So if we will only submit to the power of the Holy Spirit moment by moment, no? We will experience victory in our life. When we struggle over sin, kung ano man yung sin na yun that we struggle with, we cannot change. We cannot change. Only ah, only through the power of the Holy Spirit, letting Him live His life through us. Only that way we will experience victory in our life. We are free from judgment. God will no longer judge us. All, all He says in us is Jesus. When He sees Jesus in us, He will remember, Christ died already. He already paid. No condemnation. Yung first verse nun chapter eight, there is now no condemnation to those who are in Christ. No obligation. We are not obligated to follow our personal desire. We are, we no longer are obligated to follow the flesh or even Satan. And lastly, no more separation. When I receive Christ, I receive eternal life. I receive forgiveness of my sin. And Jesus promised, He will never leave me nor forsake me. Even if I die, even if I die, I will be with Him, and He is with me. So our security, God's love, because of His great love, no? Because of His great love, God will protect us as our good shepherd. If He did not spare His own son, He gave His only begotten son. Ano pa ang pwede nating hingin sa Diyos na hindi niya maibibigay? Kung hindi niya pinagkaeat yung kanyang bogtong na anak na si Esus, anong malaking bagay ang pwede nating hilingin na hindi niya maibibigay? If we desire to live a, a faithful walk with God, He will, He will allow us to experience, because He already gave the Holy Spirit to do that. And all, everything, and all things that we need to live the Christian life, He gave it all to us. So living here on earth, living as a follower of Christ, marami po tayong pagsubok, marami po tayong mga paghihirap na dadanasan. Pero take courage, take courage, because we have hope. We have hope that this present suffering will just be temporary. Ito po ay hindi sa isip lang. This is, these are really a promise from our living God. It's for us to experience. We just have to appropriate it. So as I close, no? As I close, kanina, we said justification, justification is freedom from the penalty of sin. Sanctification is freedom from the pres- the power of sin. Glorification is freedom from the presence of sin. When, when Jesus returns and transform us to a glorified body, sin will be gone. Sin will be gone. Sin will no longer be present during that time. But for now, sin is still in existence. Wala po tayong magagawa dun, maliban lang na magtiwala tayo sa kapangyarihan ng Panginoon through His Holy Spirit. Because the Holy Spirit is now our master. Sin has no longer power over us. Let's close in prayer. Our heavenly Father, thank you for your Son Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins. Thank you for sending us the Holy Spirit, our Comforter, our Helper. And you said in Acts one eight, "For we shall receive power." And thank you that you have given us that ability to overcome temptation. We cannot, but you can through your Holy Spirit. We just have to submit and listen to His voice. Lord Jesus, I pray that all of us here this evening will learn to depend on you, to seek you, to commune with you, to enjoy our walk with you. May we grow in this relationship. In Jesus' name, amen.